Bryant Murray.
Good evening Bryant Murray, 1100 Maxwell Lane. I never thought I was going to come back here. But here I am. So let's just do the math real quick. So at 241 million plus some debt service, based on the number of students that you projected for the next 30 years, it's roughly $65,000 per kid, for every kid, for the next 30 years, for the facility. No pencils, no computers, no teachers, $65,000 for every kid that walks through those doors for the next 30 years. Now, I've been advocating for a new high school for at least a decade, so I'm excited. And I could even swallow $65,000 a kid. If you provide an accountability plan. How is this facility going to help educate the kids better than they already are? How's it going to improve the school rankings better than the facilities that we have now? So that the taxpayer is going to have a highly rated school, so that more people will stay and more people will send their kids to the education, for the education, and not because of the ITAC rank and the riding state. So again, I could be in favor of this. I've been advocating for years, but one thing that this board has lacked for at least a decade is an accountability plan. And that's what I'd like to see, not only from the administration, but from the Board of Education, to say, hey, if this doesn't work out the way we think it's going to, then we all walk away. Because this is a lot of money. This is your one shot. This is a quarter billion dollars. So hopefully that you will show some accountability. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Daly, 812 Grand Street, Hoboken. I'm hearing so much anger here tonight. I'm hearing applause for anger. I'm hearing disrespect from people. I'm hearing nasty talk like that about all of you who are, I think, very clearly well-intentioned. Does that mean that everything has been handled the right way? No, probably not, in retrospect. Might you have handled some things differently? Probably so. I can only imagine you wanted to have a proposal in place for people to look at and understand, rather than it just kind of hanging in the atmosphere. In retrospect, might you have done it slightly differently or very differently? Maybe. But I just wanted to acknowledge each of you that I think are here for the right reasons, trying to improve our town, trying to improve the experience that our children have.
What?
Like I said, I'm really embarrassed for some of the dialogue and some of the rhetoric here tonight. My children, I have two boys, they are in the Hoboken Public School System, they're having a terrific experience, they're having a terrific education. They are really, one's really involved in sports, one's really involved in the arts. I would love to learn some more about the arts in particular, because I saw that there were theaters, I saw that there is, I think, a music room. I'd love to learn more about how those areas in particular, because in a time when I think the arts have been cut in a lot of districts, I'm so heartened that in this town, whether or not this high school goes through, that there is such support for the arts, and that's a beautiful thing. I would love to learn some more about that, as well as the community access, because the fact that there's theaters, there are so many productions and things that could go on in town, but maybe they don't have a place for it. So all of our taxpayer dollars that are going towards this, to understand more about the community access to some of these things, will be really great, because I think there have been a lot of really good questions about, you know, how is that going to happen? It hasn't happened before. How are we going to, you know, how will the community really be able to benefit from this? And I think that quite frankly, there have been a lot of really good questions tonight, even among, even among some people who are maybe more likely to be negative or vote no for this, I still think that they do have some, some great questions, and I hope, and I look forward to just some sort of forum where, where you guys can really address each and everything, so that by the time the vote is here, we can all have the answers. And whether or not we're sore that we didn't know about it earlier, we know about it now, so let's just get all of our questions answered and have as much transparency as we can over the next several weeks, and make a decision from there. So thank you, all of you.
David Hodge.
Evening, I'm David Hodge, I live at 715 Madison. I am, I happen to be an architect, and I would, I came with a couple of other questions and comments about the design, but I think maybe I've rethought what I might say tonight. I wanted to say that the project itself, as someone who moved into Hoboken 15 years ago, that thought they would stay here for a year, and has decided to stay, having a new high school is a top, top need in the high school, in the town. The fact that my kids stayed in school all last year, thanks to Dr. Johnson and the programs that they've been in, in the public school have been phenomenal. So I think that to help some of the people answer some of their questions, it would be helpful to see the programming work that's been done. I think one thing that would be advantageous would be to look at the other schools around, High Tech, St. Peters, some of the other schools that are new in the towns where people move to from Hoboken. The reason that the enrollment, I think, that people are saying that hasn't grown is because there's no schools to take more kids. If there was more space, you would have more kids in the school. So I think it would be good to look at those and to show what Hoboken has in relation to those other schools. Do, you know, do they have a gym? Do they have indoor basketball? Do they have a pool? So that we can start to explain why we need to build those things into the building in order to keep people in Hoboken. So the goal would be to keep people in Hoboken and to stay in the public school versus going out into New York or going to, out into Jersey City and to pay for those schools. Is that something that you guys can share, that information? The size, you know, how many students it serves, the square footage of it? Again, just to give people some insight into what we have now. If the school is 50 years old, it is well past its useful life. I can tell you as an architect, buildings are designed for 50 years, and that's, that's really what they're designed for. I think it would be helpful too, one thing that, just as an aesthetic thing, I commented I talked to the architects for a minute earlier, I would like, I think that the, the school should be a little more modern. It has a very modern program. The elements in it are very sort of right at the top at High Tech, it was just built, you know, the same kind of stuff that I, would be great to see here. It looks a little dated, the design of it, like the facade at the front, should be more glass, should be more open. The north and south sides could be more solid, and towards Columbus Park should be more open, so it's more inviting to the public, you can see it, and you can see to the facilities that people can use. I think that might help the design a lot. But I've heard about the school for five years, and it's amazing to see that it's actually happening, that you guys are trying to get it through, and I understand how hard it is to get it to a point where you can show it to the public, because if it's shown, and you say it's 180, and then it comes 240, people go crazy. So you got to give them a little bit of leeway, because they have to do enough work to get something that they can stand behind. So that's, that's all I would ask. Thanks.
Hi, it's good to be here. I'm glad you've set up these meetings. I basically have a long series of questions, probably won't fit five minutes, but I will highlight them. So in the presentation that you have shared with the public, unfortunately, all the, all the focus is in the lower grades. And we know about the alleged tsunami effect, or the continuing of all those people all the way up, but you're not providing, because people in this town have seen five years ago and 10 years ago, what has happened literally to the enrollment in the high school. And if that has not gone up, you're not, one way or the other, getting the votes you need of parents and students in the high school. So you need to show that, you need to show that increase in the middle school, not just what's going on in pre and K. Is there another round? In other words, how many, what is that real trend when you, when you look at all those? Not just the K and pre-K, which seem quite popular. To the question or the points being raised immediately before me, what percent of all high school age students that live in Hoboken are actually attending Hoboken High? And what is the trend of that? Has that increased, stayed flat, or gotten worse over the last five years, last 10 years? That's your grade card. Do they, do they trust, want, welcome the Hoboken High education versus the many other options that I know, literally on my block, almost everybody, and it's a Hoboken resident 33 years, Park since 98. The children that I know have, at some point or another, wound up in a different school, they've not wound up at Hoboken High. So there's that personal selection factor, and we need to see that, that you're making progress, or why wouldn't we make this enormous, enormous investment? Then I have to ask, what is, what is the cost of this, really? You know, you've talked about the cost of this building, we've heard a lot of people compute for us, not from you, the interest rates and the real costs over those 30 years, even fascinating enough, the cost per student that might actually utilize it. But what is the other cost? And how are they being met? There was a reference, which is, which is useful, to the 30 million on renovating this building, which we understand in your master plan would be a convert from a middle school into another school. But what is that cost? Will the 30 million cover it? Or is that incremental? Is that covered for in your existing budget? Are we going to see another bond for all these changes? When, when an elementary moves to Demerist, and Demerist moves to high school, is there the renovation needed on the high school? So I feel like there are a lot of hidden costs in addition to the, the utility costs that have been referenced. Then, what is the impact on Columbus Park? And we've had a little bit of discussion on that, but really not enough. I was there today, light is streaming through that park, and the reason light streams through that park in the afternoon, even in the summer, is that the athletic fields are great. And, and we love that park. So what is the real impact on that park? There is a brand new wading fountain, it is totally beloved and heavily used in the middle of the summer. That wading fountain, I think, and even in the middle of summer, is largely going to be in the shade. There is a, a public bathroom facility that seems to have disappeared. There is like less tennis space, there's a basketball court that somebody, I guess, is going to talk about later, that has disappeared. So, so we need that. We need information about Columbus Park and the impact on well-established sycamore trees, beautiful trees that we all love. And so I have to come back to this issue that's been raised several times, transparency. You know, we just went through reelection, three of you were up for reelection, you got probably most of our votes.
I'm sorry, sir.
This did not come up in advance. And it's too fast to do this in January. Thank you very much.
Antonio Grana. Antonio Grana, he's left. Laura Razzisi? I'm sorry?
My name is Leslie Norwood, 49 Willow Terrace, Hoboken. I've lived in Hoboken for almost 24 years, and I'm the proud mom of two Brand students. I'm an unabashed advocate for the public schools, and believe that you really shouldn't complain about anything unless you're going to help fix it. I have been active with the Public Education Foundation, trying to raise money for the public schools, like the suburbs have been doing for decades, and also with the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. As any principal at Brand or any administrator would know, I've been yelling about facilities and underinvestment in infrastructure since before my kids started at the public schools. Due to the age of the buildings, Cassandra Rodriguez, I'm sorry, I've haunted your office and, and the facilities director, many a time, about substandard facilities, has actually reported the district to the state for substandard facilities. It is something that is needed desperately for our children. I believe in that there's equity issues here. And yes, we do want to increase the enrollment of Hoboken High School. And yes, there is a history of families with resources sending their children to private school or moving to the suburbs, leaving only the families without resources in the high school. And that is not an acceptable thing in my book. I want to thank the BOE, Superintendent Johnson, and their staff for all their efforts so far. I really appreciate the proposal, which is a vision, and it clearly tries to incorporate many of the things that community members have been asking for from the city, including recreational opportunities for teenagers and older children, which there is a dearth of, and that's been a big sore point in the community. There is honestly zero chance that everybody wanted to pack me. People want a new high school versus people don't want their taxes to go up, love it or not, I don't think it's too much to ask for respectful dialogue and behavior. And I'm really disappointed with the interruptions here, with the people in the hallway disrupting the meeting. If you want to participate in the public discourse, come and participate, and don't disrupt the meeting. Adults in the room have a duty and responsibility to behave in a manner that we'd like others, including our schoolchildren, to behave. And I, I think that that civil discourse is really critical here. I have worked in the municipal bond industry, supporting investment and public infrastructure for as long as I've lived in Hoboken. I think we can all agree here, there's a significant amount of deferred maintenance for our school facilities. I would love to see a new high school for my sons to attend. If we do need to borrow, now is the time. Interest rates are at a historic low, and I urge people to vote yes.
I have worked on federal, state, and sometimes local, if it's a flow-through, infrastructure and finance programs. And I just am going to, more logical, keep this very simple, about what the government is about, and our taxes, what we're here for, and how to support it. And the reason I'm turning a bit is not to disrespect the Education Board, but we do have a referendum coming up, and we've got to emphasize that over and over, because this is the behavior of the administration, who just ramrod things with no notification, with improper following of laws, such in this case, one of the main ones, of course, is the lack of transparency and public outreach. Public outreach doesn't happen after design. So let's look at what the government is here for. We have had a lot of financial losses under this administration, huge. It's very hard to take care of your own health, and I want to commend the person who brought up that you need to open up to the community. You don't know what it's like to have to walk to this school when you don't know where it is, and you've got health issues. Okay? So this is not really an open meeting, and you have to come and wait an hour in a board meeting when it's represented as a public information for this only. So our budget and our government is here as a, the base level for health and safety. You don't look at anything else until that is secured. This community, I won't go into the reasons, but it's the same reasons that we are here now with this board, does not have a community hospital. That hospital can go away and be condos in no time. Okay? So this should not even be talked about, because we have not addressed the issue of public health and safety first. And of course, if you're a little bit more knowledgeable on some of the ground floor pieces of government and history of Hoboken, within health is also in poorer communities, your housing. So education is something way, way off the priorities, and I can't give you numbers on what it's going to cost, but in order to get a community hospital, you need to have some public, some public funding.
Excuse me, can you, can you turn around and address the board, please?
Can you please be independently representing us? I will just close in saying that the root cause of all of this is structurally in that we do not have-
Excuse me, turn around and address the board with your comments.
We do not have independent boards. Boards, this board, and every board in this city, is appointed by the same administration, and whether they're voted on or not, we know from this election that something's dreadfully wrong. And the whole, the root cause of this is the boards in our city, and we need to focus on health and safety first.
Excuse me, please turn around and address the board. Thank you. Perry Lynn.
Very much.
Perry Lynn, 1014 Hudson Street. So I went over your 10-slide presentation, and this really isn't a high school problem. It seems like we don't have a high school enrollment issue. There's plenty of capacity in the high school. It's a, you presented it as a lower grade pre-K problem, where you're renting out classrooms. So then that brings up this issue of transparency, because you did not allow any public input prior. So the only option that were presented is either a shiny $241 million new high school or nothing. So have you guys looked at building an elementary school or middle school to support these younger grades? I'm pretty sure they don't need an ice rink, and I'm pretty sure that's not going to cost $241 million. Have you looked at continuing to rent other classrooms? How about purchasing a building? Has that been discussed? So there were plenty of options to solve the problem that was presented in your present, in your own presentation. Yet, because there was no transparency in this process, none of this stuff was explored. So now we have a vote coming up, possibly. And I say possibly because I believe there's a agenda item where you can vote to pass this resolution. And I believe if you don't pass it, then printing of ballots and so forth will be delayed, which means that there will not be a vote on January 25th. So I implore this board to vote no tonight, so that the public, whether you're for it or against it, can ask the questions, explore the options that are available, and to really start this process over, so that we are not saddled with either a yea or nay, which may not be the best solution for our long-term success.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. That was our last speaker for the agenda items only.
Okay, so now, now before we move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, we will be moving on to the consent agenda.
Please call the roll. Ms. Katamatori.
Yes.
Ms. Delira.
Yes.
Mr. Delator.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Cluckbull.
Yes.
Ms. Ripper.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Zakarian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please.
Okay, Joshua Einstein? You're done? Okay. Marie Sullivan?
Marie Sullivan, 213 14th Street. I just wanted to add some context, I know you've voted already, but the Hudson County Schools of Technology, High Tech High, where a great number of Hoboken students go to, which is free, somebody talked about, it's for, Hoboken High is only for kids who can't afford school. The county schools are free. They built a new school in 2018. They talked about this school for 10 years. Everybody knew they were building a new school, 350,000 square feet. In 2014, they said it was going to be a $120 million school. When they opened in 2018, it was a $160 million school, a third more. So should that be the standard? We can look to be paying a third more than what you're saying now. Also, another school that was built recently, beloved charter school in Jersey City, which is, which is going to have 480 students, I should go back, sorry, High Tech, 2,000 students in that school for $160 million. Beloved charter, opening their high school, they have a couple grades in there now, they're going to be at 480 students. They built a four-story school on Grand Street for the grand total of $12.5 million. That's not a mistake, $12.5 million, they built their school. There is a waiting list to get into that school. So this is not just some dumb old school. Everybody knows, it's not about the school, it's about the feeling of the school, what they want out of the school, that's what's important. We all know, everybody runs off to the county schools, they, they knock each other down to get to those schools. Back when High Tech was a bunker out on Tunnel Lee Avenue, without one facility, they were knocking themselves, knocking each over to get into it. So please, this is not about facilities, kids aren't going to come because of the ice rink. They're not going to come because, they're going to not come because we know what the test scores are. People Google it, and they go, holy moly, less than 10%. And if you go to the state figures, how many kids at the high school passed math? There's an asterisk. It's so low, it's an asterisk. How many parents are going to say, yeah, that's for me, it's got an ice rink? I know there are great teachers there. I know. My kids went to the school in early years. I bragged about the Hoboken schools. I bragged about the Hoboken schools. So don't tell me, it had nothing to do with that. So you can all, you know, obviously you don't care about math. Obviously you don't care about thinking about it. And I'm sorry if this is offensive to some people and my voice is raised, but you see how it goes. People can get up here and say, why didn't you talk about this? Why didn't you talk about this? Why didn't you let us know? You pass somebody on the street, you would say, hey, what's up with that new high school? But you all were secretive. That is the worst kind of government. It's like diabolical. You had an election. I looked on the team that ran, like the Bill Beck Better or whatever their name is, and they said, nothing about a high school. The parent group that was mentioned, they got a special little meeting or they got to hear about it ahead of time. So it's all about the secrets. That's one question you never answered. Why did you do it that way? I'm sure your lawyer didn't tell you, make it secret. They build high schools around this state, around this country all the time. People talk about them. They have input. And that didn't happen here. And I don't care what you say, you can't be nice when people obviously have their minds made up, they've got something going on. What's up with you guys? What is up? Who told you to do it? Ravi Bala? I guess he was in on it. He knew about it. What do you sit around? You go in secret meetings, you go in the executive session. I was on the board. I know what happens behind the scenes. I know how the sausage is made. And you all talked about this. You had your bad numbers. Whoever cooked up the bad numbers? And you all went, oh my God, it's kind of 150%. Oh my God, we've got to do something right away. I'm sorry if I'm not polite, but I think you all are really, really-
Donna Antonucci.
Donna Antonucci, 402 9th Street, Hoboken. You know, I'm going to echo a lot of what has already been said, but it's really about just, you know, voicing my opinion about what's happening here. I do find it very nefarious that all the public hearings are being held during the holiday season when no one is going to really hear about this. I find it nefarious that there is a scheduled vote lined up with those public hearings as if there's going to be no objection. It's like there is a fait accompli on it. And I think that that's wrong. The way we do things, where we do public works here in Hoboken is with public input. It was actually something started by Mayor Dorian Zimmer. So I do find it very, it lacks integrity that you're doing it this way. And I'm going to urge the public to vote no. Because the best way to negotiate with you is to turn it down. It sounds horrendous at $241 million. I agree with what others have said. It's not about the building. It's about the programs and the teachers and whether or not there is actual momentum. And people aren't going to come for the gym. I don't agree with the fact that the tennis courts are going to be within the building, under the building, in the building, which means that you have to access the building, which in today's world, because of security concerns, it's not going to be really that accessible. And if you have to, if you want to use anything up on the top of the building, then you actually have to go through the building. So I don't, I think it's, I don't agree with the design. The presentation was cursory. It really doesn't, this is, this is not a hearing the way Hoboken does hearings. So again, I urge the public to vote no. I also want to point out that in public records, there's 165 students that are actually here in our public school systems that are through school choice. Approximately 145 of them are actually in the high school. So when we look at the number of 425 students, which is the number apparently in recent reportings of how many students are actually in the high school, the number of residents, people that actually live here is actually far lower. It's less than 100 students per grade or less than 400 students. And that's before you count the, the people who actually make up fictitious leases and come here. Okay? So if you want more space, you can have that. The original school was designed for 1,500 students. I understand your projections around 1,200. I think there's nothing wrong with renovating. I think that you should actually, you should cancel the vote if you can. I know you can still pull out. You can undo your resolution. I think that, and the public should absolutely vote it down. That's the best way to negotiate with you. I think we, there were some people that talked about surveys and really understanding why people go to the other schools. I think a comparison would actually be quite useful. I'd like to know about the people who, if we could survey the people who did not put their kids in the district to really understand why. I also want to make note that there's lots of other things that are, that's going to increase the tax levy here in Hoboken. So just to sit there and say it's $93 per 100,000, it's just a little more, it's just a little more. It's always just a little more. And I think that that's wrong. And I should, I also want to make sure that the tenants out there understand that their rent can be increased directly by the increase in taxation. It's not just about homeowners. But tenants can actually foot the bill for this as well. I also appreciate those that mentioned the park. I do live on the park. I face the park, so I don't actually face the site. So understand, I am concerned for my neighbors when it comes to construction noise, although that's temporary. But light, I think that that's very accurate. I think it's a bizarre thing that the front of the public entrance is going to be right in front of, or right behind the Spray Park, which is brand new. I am concerned about the light coming into the park. I can't tell you how much the park was used this year with COVID. You know, the moms were out there doing their circle, singing songs and reading books. There were yoga classes in the park. I mean, it was a COVID lifesaver for a lot of people. And it's just, it's going to have this gargantuan building just blocking it now, which I think is horrendous. What about the cobblestone street? Are you going to destroy that? Who's, who are the, who are the architects? You realize there's a cobblestone street. Where are the architects? Are you going to dig up the cobblestone street? What is the actual height of the building, the highest point? And how does that compare to zoning? Can you speak up, please? Can you please speak up? I can't hear you.
86 feet.
How does that compare to the zoning rules? About. It's supposed to be 40, isn't it supposed to be something like 40 feet above the median of the four corners? I, I'm, I question that 86 feet is-
Uh, Ms., your time is up. Five minutes is up.
I'd like a warning. And then the other thing, I also want to, I'm concerned about mixing high school students with the children that play in the park right in front of it. And I don't know if you considered safety or foot traffic. Have you considered foot traffic? Foot traffic in the park? What increased the foot traffic? Will the school create increased foot traffic in the park? And that's not a concern?
And the students will enter on Jefferson Street?
What about the people who use the park? Vote no.
Thank you. Jordan Goldberg?
Jordan Goldberg, Hoboken resident. I too am deeply concerned about the park. It is used by hundreds and hundreds of 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5-year-olds every day. That, the open space between the fields, the courts, the basketball court, and Columbus Park is probably the largest open space right in central Hoboken. It's pretty much our central park and you're just ripping it up and destroying it. That is really unconscionable, putting that whole park under, under shadow where little kids are playing every day in the sun and having, yes, there's concern that having lots of teenagers, having lots of teenagers hanging out as well could present a safety concern, but primarily the fact that you're ripping up this park is a real, is a real issue. I know you're not physically ripping up the park, but you're casting a giant shadow over it. There are security concerns there. And the fact that it's, you know, the, the light and open space has been in, has been a, has been an agenda item of this administration. So it's really a curious contradiction of the stated policies of more green and more open to then build this mammoth center that is well in excess of any need. I think it's very clear that the demographic studies are deeply, deeply flawed and that you have no basis for a three or four-fold increase in the high school students. I mean, somebody mentioned at the opening remarks that these thousand new units of, you know, including one-bedroom units. Were one-bedroom units really included in the demographic study for the projections? Because I don't know any high school students that share bedrooms with their parents. I'm asking, are one-bedroom units, the construction of one-bedroom units included in these projections?
The 1,100, roughly 1,100 units that are under the zoning and planning board review includes 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units.
But were those one-bedroom units factored into your demographic projections for a high school enrollment?
Yeah. And they estimate, estimate how many children would come out of those typical units. So a one-bedroom would not warrant likely any children.
Okay. So that's factored in?
Yes.
Okay. I think that everyone obviously has a huge issue with the cost. I mean, that looks like the Starship Enterprise, like, and there's the notion of this field of dreams, if you build it, they will come on the taxpayers' back is really not the way to go. This has, you have to have a better business case for this. I'm not saying that you shouldn't have a new school, that it might not be, that it might be justified, it might not be. But do better math, do better due diligence and more rigor and make a better case to the public and give us more time to digest it. I understand if you waited till now to have a big reveal, but then the referendum shouldn't be on January 25th, then you have to bump that back. You know, some people were upset that you didn't tell us earlier. I'm okay if you don't tell us earlier as long as, as long as the vote is not in a couple of weeks. So I urge you, just in the act from a morality perspective and the act of the public interest in being able to incorporate our input, because perhaps this can be scaled back, maybe there's a lesser amount that the taxpayers are comfortable with. Somebody brought up at some point, maybe we don't have to rip up open space. Maybe we can renovate because maybe a new demographic study that can be commissioned would show more accurate data in the fact that we can renovate the existing school to accommodate and put 50, 60, 70 million. Fine, we'll pay. I think education is important. Do an $80 million bond and renovate that school. Or if you're really so adamant about, you know, constructing a new school, there's underdeveloped space in northwest Hoboken. I mean, why, like, why aren't we purchasing buildings? Why aren't we looking at undeveloped land? I'd love to see all the different reasons why these other options that are more cost-effective that don't remove open space were declined. And then lastly, in terms of the funding, it sounded like sometimes there's state funding, sometimes there's not, and there's $300,000, whereas Union City somehow got 150 million out of $170 million school bill funded by the state. Well, why aren't, shouldn't we be, if sometimes there's money and sometimes there's not, shouldn't we be waiting until we can get some money? Why are we just doing it now where we have to fund the entire amount rather than waiting for a new administration to, at the state level to make funds available for the school? That's it. So is there any, I'd love to yield the rest of my time to responses to anything that I've just brought up.
Do you want to talk about? We'll, we'll address your comment in-
Mask on.
Please keep your mask on, Ms.
There hasn't been funding for many of the former abbots in years. Hoboken is one of those districts. The large amount that they were dedicating to us is for the Demeress School. Is there an opportunity for more money to come in the future? We can't obviously project that, but what we can say is that over the past, I don't know how many years, I think the majority, the largest amount of money we've received to date is a little over $1 million for the exterior of Brant School Building.
Is Union City not an Abbott district and that's how they got 150 million?
No, Union City is actually also a former Abbott district, but Union City is deemed through the SDA as a district that's in need of additional funding. Hoboken is not deemed a district that's in need of additional funding.
So if that's already deemed that we're not in need of additional funding and we raised $240 million through a bond, isn't it very likely, as you said, because you said the court could overturn the funding for our pre-K program? So couldn't they look at all this and make that decision?
Hoboken is not the only former abbot that is not receiving money. There, there are others that are not.
I'm talking about our current aid. Isn't that at risk? You said, well, they look at it separately, but-
No, our current preschool aid is not at risk. The preschool program funding is not linked or tied to facility projects.
Okay. And can you address my, the, my, the final question was around other alternatives, renovating the existing school, purchasing a building and looking at undeveloped sites that aren't currently being used as adjacent to parks and removing basketball courts and a tennis court and public classrooms and casting shadows over little children?
Yeah. So, so a part of the long-range facilities plan deals with just that, looking at each of our buildings, seeing if there's property available. We've gone through it with preschool, with multiple realtors attempting to find space for preschool in town. Is there any space available in different parts of the city? Possibly. We have looked at that. The district actually looked at it a little over 10 years ago in a parcel of lands in the northwest section and didn't, was not able to build in that area. And believe it or not, the funding that was potentially going to be used for that building actually is the funding that went to Union City.
Can you release reports on all this research that you did into alternatives?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie D'Antonio. You want to switch the tapes? Okay. Bear with us for one minute. He has to switch the tapes. Okay. We are going to get started. Just, just so you are all aware, we have been hearing everything you're saying, taking notes of your questions. Any questions that have been asked, we will take a look at and respond to you within 24 hours. There was one thing that Ms. Antonucci just mentioned about the tennis court access. And I wanted to, before we get any further, those will not be behind closed doors. Those will still be open to the public, free access as they are today. So I just wanted to clarify that. Sure. I'm sorry? The public bathrooms, can we talk about that? Are there public bathrooms in the, built into the community side of the building? Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Eric, can you answer that question?
Oh, okay. The public bathrooms will still be there at the park next to the splash pad, that area? They'll still be, they'll still be there.
One other thing I wanted to clarify is somebody mentioned that the entrances would be directly behind the splash pad. It is not. It is actually on the other side of where the public bathrooms are. So if you're going down, what is that?
10th Street.
10th Street. It's, it's like sort of walking down 10th Street and straight in. So it's not behind the splash pad at all.
Okay. I'm sorry. Please state your name and-
Are we ready? Yes. Valerie D'Antonio. I'm a Hoboken resident, 402 9th Street. And I'm not going to be as eloquent as some of the other speakers who are extremely passionate, as we all are about our living arrangements and, and our environment. I must say though, I was a little disappointed at the, this very flashy video with ominous music, which appears to be a sports complex masquerading as a school. So that was a little off-putting immediately. That's just my general critique. And I, I will echo what my other neighbors have said, that the price tag is extremely high and why haven't we looked at other alternatives like refurbishing the existing school? Some of the other schools have worked with developers to use their space for their school. So there appears to be, there could be some other alternatives. The price tag is, is exorbitantly high and it will, and the maintenance costs of all of these facilities hasn't really been outlined very well. So it's just a big question mark and a little disappointing. And the other issue for me is the loss of open space. What is the, what does this do to our carbon footprint as a town? And when people are looking to, you know, just more light and air, we've all talked about the importance of the park being so close. So what is the impact up in the park? So there are many other issues, but in the, I think my neighbors have really spoken very eloquently and passionately about the enrollment figures and the, and the dollars that would have to go. So I would strenuously vote, talk to my neighbors to vote no on this at this time. And maybe it's time to go back to the drawing board to look at some other alternatives. Obviously- Obviously, kids are important, but a school is not made up of, you know, a great education has to do with innovative programming, creative teachers. You know, I'm preaching to the choir, but that's really, it's not a building that people really want. They want, they want quality education. Thank you.
Steve Rubin?
Steve Rubin?
Evening.
I think I signed up for the wrong list. I thought I was on the earlier one. But I'm relatively new to this, to this process, and so I'm going to ask questions. I guess either you're answering them or you're taking, taking notes. But I'm going to echo, obviously you've heard a lot, and very eloquent in terms of the issues, the concerns that everyone's raising here. So really, I want to understand why this is only a six week process for something that is so important and such an important piece of public policy. To find out about this two weeks ago and to have to vote on it in four, four weeks from now, and with all of these questions out there, it's unconscionable to put this out. You know, Steve Rubin, 27 year resident, almost 28 years in Hoboken. So, you know, I've seen how this community has grown, has come together, and I've seen some bad things, and this is, really smells bad. Really does. So there needs to be more transparency, need to understand why there needs to be this new building, what the other alternatives are, why those haven't been explored, why you can't retrofit buildings. I see developers doing it all the time. That lovely church on 9th Street, I know it's a smaller scale, but we expect the developers to do that. Why can't we do that with, with our buildings? The capacity, I mean, I've read anywhere from 25 to 33% for that, a capacity for the high school and the, and the middle school. Why all of a sudden do you expect, after all this time, for it to explode and quadruple in the next 10, 20 years? That, that doesn't make sense. Even if the, the population grows another 15%, 20% in the next 10 years, 20 years, how does that calculate? The numbers don't add up. I think we've heard questions about the impact in the neighborhood. The light, the noise, the impact on Columbus Park, those are all really important questions. I think the price tag, I've also read that this is something far exceeding any school development in New Jersey and maybe in the U.S. in terms of cost per capita per student. It's, it's a huge ticket. It's a huge expense that you're going to burden the population with. Every homeowner, every, every, every property owner, and ultimately also the renters as well are going to have to pick up the slack on that. The public availability, I know I've heard that spoken about. Who dictates that? When is that going to be available? What are, what are school hours? You're taking away some, some of those elements. You're taking away some of those elements from, that are out there in the park today, and who knows how those are going to be accessed in the future. Certainly not clear from those wonderful plans that the architect had. Actually, I had a question for the architect. You guys talked a little bit about your experience, what buildings you've done. Have you ever done anything of this magnitude? This large? This expensive? Two other high schools in Massachusetts. Okay. And how does that compare to this one?
All right, yeah, I have, I have one more question. I have one more question. And this is one specific element. I mean, it's great, and I understand there's a lot of, a lot of facilities being built in here. Who the hell needs an ice rink? I mean, that is the most ludicrous piece I've seen. I mean, skating is a wonderful thing. Certainly, we don't have a hockey team. That is, I mean, it's just ludicrous.
We do have a hockey team.
I, I take it back then. I withdraw that. But still, is that something we need to invest in, in the high school? Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Hager?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jennifer Hager. I am at 409th Street, and I've lived in Hoboken for eight years. I have two children in the system, in the public system currently. And I was really impressed with how you guys handled COVID. And because of that, I've gained a lot of respect and trust in the administration, particularly you, Dr. Johnson. And the lack of transparency with this proposal is extremely disappointing. It's not in line with the clear communication that I've been accustomed to, and I just don't understand why. And I feel a lot of people have asked, and you guys have not answered. And much like some people here, I am new to this. I don't know how this works, but I thought this was a question and answer session. So I would love to know why, because I think there's, there's something important to that. Like, it's, is there something you're hiding, you know, or did you want it to pass without? I don't understand.
There's nothing that's being hidden. The democratic process is, you can vote yes or you can vote no. This is a plan that we've developed, looking forward for our district, for the community. And this is why we're presenting it to you. There are plenty of meetings. You can come to every single one and get, this is our, so going back to your other question, this is our public board meeting. Typically, we don't entertain any questions. It's a comment section portion only. We are writing down your questions, responding to some. We will respond to the others we have gathered. The other meetings coming up will be more of a Q and A's format. But this is our public board meeting. So nothing is being hidden. We're presenting a plan that we feel fits our academic programs, the community needs, and everyone has the right to vote yes or no.
But I just feel like usually this kind of stuff is not on a four week program or six week program. Like, there's, if you, like, why wasn't it included in the general election? Like, why the urgency for the quick vote and not part of the normal process, right? If this is the normal process, then the normal process goes along with the regular voting. It's just timing, right?
Well, we can't vote on something until we have, we can't even present the project until we have a, an approval from the DOE. So we did not have an approval from the DOE for the November election.
But I think the more important thing that you should know is that even if the project was ready for November, it's not, it's not on the general election ballot. A referendum wouldn't fall on that. It's a separate election. So it wouldn't, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be on the same, wouldn't be at that same date.
We're listening to what you're saying. And, you know, we've voted tonight to have this vote on the 25th, and we're presenting the project as it is to you tonight and at the other meetings. But we're hearing everything you're saying.
Then I would just like to echo some of the other things that people have said. It's, what is the, you know, the traffic study? I know there was a car traffic study, which honestly, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, because people don't drive to high school. Like, it's going to be the same teachers going from this building to this building? Was there a foot traffic study done in the park? How is that going to affect the normal activity in the park?
Is our, is our traffic expert here tonight still?
No, she left. But I think that is something that should be addressed, because there are lots of children in the park there. The actual middle schools and elementary schools go there during the day for their, you know, their outside recess time. And if there's a flood of high school people going in and out, community people going in and out to use whatever facilities, I think it's going to impact it. I think the light in the park is really important. But like, somebody mentioned during COVID, that was our escape. Like, that was where we lived. And it's huge in urban living, to have fresh air and light and not be a brick wall of a city block surrounding it. I feel like there, there are a lot of smart people in this town, and a lot of really smart developers, that can figure out some other place to have this high school and not in the middle of all of these residential buildings, some of which are going to be 12 feet away from brick wall. And that's students in the classrooms. Like, this is not, like, people on the football field are going to be looking into windows of neighboring, you know, dining room kitchens. It's, it's not the same. It's just a regular residential building. And then there's... And then another question to that is, has there been any studies done on the actual structural impact of doing construction so close to a lot of these neighboring buildings? Like, the Miami building collapse was due to construction nearby that messed up the infrastructure. Has that been looked at?
Can you speak to that, Frank?
So it has been done or it will be done? Looking at...
It hasn't, has it been a real major process?
Okay. And then I feel like the less expensive alternatives. There are other places to build the high school at, from what I understand, is at a third of its capacity. That could maybe move the middle school into there, and then the, the elementary school. I feel like there's a lot of things that could be done.
Just to touch on that point, so this long range facilities plan would do just that. It would, this high school would be built, our high school students would move to this new high school, the middle school students who are currently housed here and don't have a proper gym, don't have a proper cafeteria, work at, at the limit of capacity here, would move to the existing high school. That would become the Hoboken Middle School. And at that point, the SDA would come in, renovate this building for it to become a new elementary school, to alleviate the pressure on the existing elementary schools that are out there.
Yeah, all of that makes sense. Up into the high school, that's going to be fairly empty. Like, it's still, like, a 1,500 capacity. I mean, I see the football stands, like, there's never anybody out there, and this has a 1,500 capacity. It's insane. I just don't think it's going to be filled.
There's a lot of talk about the high school, and that we're not at capacity, and we're adding, you know, this huge high school with more capacity. There's, there's, and the architects can confirm this, but there's not a lot more capacity at this high school than our existing capacity, right? So it's not like we're building a school that houses, you know, three times the existing capacity of the existing high school. It is really to, it is really to alleviate the pressure at, we're going to, we need a lot more. All of our elementary schools are busting at the seams, right? So we, and we need to take some down because there's so many that are sold. We're talking about three that are, you know, over 100 years old. When Demeress comes offline, that creates a certain number, a certain amount of additional pressure, which will then be relieved by it coming back online. So there's a lot of discussion about, you know, what's the capacity of a high school, whether that high school, whether we're building this huge high school for so much more capacity. That's not actually completely true. It's really an all facilities program where this, where this new high school would alleviate capacity for the other schools coming through.
And, and it would bring proper academic spaces for our high school programs that we are currently, that are currently serving our children now. For example, a proper biomedical science lab, as opposed to a retrofitted science lab that's, you know, in just a general classroom. Appropriate spaces for high school students.
If you have $60 million for renovation of buildings, you can build, you can raise a big amount of lab for $60 million.
And working backwards, we are still busting at the seams at the elementary and middle school levels.
So, and then, the current high school, there is a middle school and a high school that's definitely out there. So I won't renovate, you know, you can have some terrible facilities, it's been all a lot, one on, uh, was listed to brand, and have, the building is big enough to hold both middle and high schools. Do you need a replacement, no matter what?
Yeah, no, it's, that wouldn't work. That's not a feasible option. Yeah, I'm sorry. If you'd like to finish?
Yeah, I just have two more comments. You know, I know that a lot of the facilities will be community use, but I just learned that the high school actually has a pool that is community use. Never heard of that. So I don't think it's been kind of as promoted as these facilities are being promoted, and I thought that that was kind of an interesting note. And then finally, you know, studies on light and sound pollution. To have a stadium on a roof, it's already very bright and loud. Now you're raising it even higher. I think it's going to be even louder and brighter.
Frank, do you want to touch upon that? Because I know you've looked into the light and sound. And the pool is open all summer, and that is publicized, I believe, through the city, the city's program, so.
In terms of the light of the field, I mean, right now, I was at the event on Sunday night, and there's just spotlights everywhere. Well, those now will be all directional lighting. There'll be no light pollution or very little for outside of the perimeter of the building. So you will see it from a distance, but it won't be glaring or glowing. And that brings up the other issue of the sound, the, the noise that you now have from the stadium. Through acoustical treatments, we are going to be able to make the sound a lot less than it is now, much more so. There's several devices for that, directional loudspeakers, for example. You won't be hearing that, you know, 16 blocks away, you hear the announcing the game where the Hoboken gets a touchdown, you know. It's going to be mitigated. So the goal...
Even though the sun can, the buildings around, they used to have buses come in, vans, other schools, they used to have Battle of the Vans, and they started lighting very loud, usually on Sunday morning.
I can understand that.
Of course, it's the story of a building...
With, with acoustical treatment, if, as you, if you, as you've described it, you know, we have, on one side, there'll be a two-story building, the other side of the grandstands, both with acoustical, acoustical treatments. Well, you know, if you're really interested, I'll be happy to go through more detail. But I think the, the goal is, is to create a better environment than you have now in the field.
I think it has to be a good environment, not a better environment. It's a bad environment, and you're making it a little bit better. You read your thing. The other thing that I'm saying is, it's never going to get to the point where, I doubt that any high school and any architect could take marketing on top of the building.
Sir, are you signed up to speak? Are you signed up to speak?
No, paper was taken away. Lady over there grabbed it.
It keeps architectural intent.
Okay. Ms. Good, can we have the next speaker?
We don't need 11 towns.
Can we question the proximity of the light though? It's 86 feet high. Have you done a sound survey on Columbus Park?
We, we are looking at that right now. I mean, that's, obviously, the park is on, the park is on the east. Remember, this is a two-story building you have there on that end where the field is. It does have the elevated, and then two stories above it is the field. So the higher part is on Jefferson Street.
Can I call the next speaker?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you can call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Monica Matilla.
Good evening. First, I just want to say, Superintendent Johnson, I'm a big fan. I think you've done so much for schools. I'm very glad that you're there. You're sitting with, with, with us. I, I, I have two kids, Monica Matilla, 409th Street. I have a six and a three-year-old. I love Hoboken. I've been here for 10 years. I'm all about investing in our kids' education. So I, we're not the enemies. We have questions, we have concerns. And I think you have a social responsibility to see what's happening. You know, it's, it's been unfortunate that it... You know, it's, it's been unfortunate that it, it has come to that, but we want to be on your side because we have kids and we want to invest in Hoboken. I want to stay here for the long term. I want my kids to go to the public high school. I don't want to send my kids to the private high school because unfortunately that's what Hoboken residents that have teenagers are doing. I'm, I'm an accountant. The numbers don't make sense. I'm not pointing fingers. I don't think you guys are hiding the numbers. I don't think there's like a plot to deceive the public, but the numbers don't make sense. And in order for the numbers to make sense, you have to align yourselves with people that have the best interest in what you want to accomplish. You need a different firm from an architecture perspective to tell you what your options are. People that know Hoboken, people that know the city, people that understand all the structural issues that we have, all the flooding issues. This high school is actually going to be in front of our building. And there hasn't been a study that talks about whether our building will collapse if there's construction being done for six years. That's a problem. That's a concern. We want to be on your side, but you pushing a vote and not giving us the timeframe that we deserve as residents of Hoboken who want to be on your side is going to carry a weight on all of you for a very long time. And I don't want that. I want to trust that you, because I know that you have the best interest in your heart for my, for our children, for my six-year-old, my three-year-old, because I have seen it. I saw it during COVID and now I'm even more passionate about being involved and about being here. I have never been to any one of these meetings ever. I want to be on your side. What you decide, if you decide to push this vote in a rush on January 25th is going to carry a lot of weight. And I can tell you, people are going to remember. Some of you are up in election in November. Give us the opportunity to process this information, take our feedback, come up with a better plan. The plan that the architecture firm that you have been working with for 15 years has given you, it's not a good plan. It's not worth 240 million, actually more than that. You need good partnership. And people, if you look around, so many residents are like, we want to help. We want to help you. We want to be there for you. At the end of the day, we want a plan that works and this won't work. So we'll see what happens in Jan- January. It's really up to you at this point. I was disappointed that you voted already, um, without hearing all of our, everybody that has been here for three hours. But, um, I think, I think you can take this back and make the right choice. So I'm looking forward for that.
Neil Brown.
Hi, my name is Neil Brown. I live in Hoboken 18 years and I have two children in the Hoboken public school system. Uh, I have many concerns about this project, including the destruction of open space, the lack of community involvement in planning, and the speed with which the board is pushing this through during the holidays. The project of this magnitude should have been planned with input from the public, especially given the extraordinary increase in our taxes with no guarantee that the public can actually use any of the promised facilities. I want what is best for my children's education and I think they can get a great education in Hoboken while upgrading facilities without destroying open space and without the excesses of a giant hockey rink or rooftop football field that serve a select few. That money would be better directed toward our teachers and academic programs that all students can benefit from. I heard it said earlier that this park was a lifeline for parents during COVID. It certainly was for me. To see it destroyed with a massive building is heartbreaking. The last thing I want to say is we've all heard a lot of passionate input and some anger too. I hope you, the board, realize that you bear some responsibility for this due to the way you went about introducing this to the public. And you need to find a way to repair that trust with the community. And one way is to start over, cancel the vote and start again.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments and concerns. My name is Pavel Sokolov. My family and I have lived at 12th and Park for the last eight years. And my fiance and I hope to have our students enrolled, uh, children enrolled in our public education system in the near future. Uh, myself, I've always been a strong advocate for public education. Uh, my family and I immigrated here from former Soviet Union. I had the privilege to attend New Jersey Public Schools, Rutgers or Flagship University, and the QE system across the river. But with all that being said, I think when we look at public education, we must first be sure that what we are doing with our policies directly affects positive outcomes for our students. When we pass bond referendums such as these with a focus on facilities highlighting academics only as an afterthought to things like an ice rink or a huge football field, we have to remember that if we want Hoboken families to stay in the long term, we need to make sure that affordability is something that is clearly thought about. But a quarter billion tax increase, something to the tune of $93 per 100,000, actually just obfuscates the fact that it can raise taxes to thousands of dollars depending on what property you live in. Not only are property owners affected, but the renters will have to burden themselves with increase in rent. How can we say that we're looking out for the best for our students when we're trying to price them out? I think it's important that we need ethical leadership to look into the fact that while yes, this has been an ongoing project, when there are things like elections for the city council or the board of ed, these issues must be made known to the public so that we can have a fair and informed decision. You know, back in the Soviet Union, my parents said that they also had a yes or no democratic vote, but as we know, that's not really reflective of what democracy is. A rushed vote in the middle of the winter after the holiday season is a form of voter suppression and disenfranchisement. If you truly stand behind this vote, I recognize that yes, this wasn't ready in time for the past November election, but we have a primary and a congressional election that is bound to have large voter turnout. So if you truly believe in this enterprise, put it to the vote of the people. Thank you.
Carol Sciglioni, 409th Street. I don't know where to start, but a lot of the points that were brought tonight from my neighbors, I agree. I've lived in Hoboken for 32 years. When it was time to buy, I bought a 409th Street overlooking the football field. And people said, why are you doing that? Open space, Columbus Park. I rather have happy noise than bar noise and crazy noise. Football games are not every Friday night, but I have to say, I was speechless tonight when I saw the video. I don't know if the architects or anybody reached out to the board members or owners or tenants that live in that area. Looking at that, it looks like I could sprint to the new Madison, mini Madison Square Garden. That's scary. I've lived with car windows being broken and the school and the board member saying, well, you knew what you bought into. Okay, we absorbed the price. Now what's going to happen? Football, whatever else is going to hit the building or my window? Cause I'd be more than happy to have people and the architect come to my apartment or any of the apartments on the fifth floor. It's very close and it's very scary. And I think the next person that buys my place will not feel the same way. Does anybody have an answer? I mean, did anybody think to think about the owners and the people that live around that air, the football field to build a school? I think education's important, but it looks like it's a mini sports complex. The noise, windows being broken and people looking in to the window. It's scary. And I think you look, need to look at other choices and an architect that understands Hoboken and the flooding and all the other issues that surround the 1.2 square miles. Thank you.
Okay, um.
As your list of verified distance, it's the block on our street and where that's only start, just now.
Uh, I think this name says Sean. I'm really not understanding the handwriting. Sean Z? Okay, Manuel Rivera?
Fallic?
Just a few more questions. Cheryl Fallic, Hoboken resident. Um, you said you're going to answer all these questions within 24 hours. What does that mean? Press release? You don't have our email addresses, so.
Um, we are working on an FAQ and we'll put it out that way.
Okay. Or you're going to try in 24 hours is what I, I understood. If I made it seem like it was going to be immediate, I just didn't understand how you were going to get those answers. Um, are you guys going to, this one, I think you can answer right here now. Are you going to correct the ridiculous math errors that misrepresent the numbers in the flipping chart that you're sending out?
We will certainly take a look at the flipping chart.
Okay. So, so in other words, you want to confirm that we're all correct, that the math is wrong before you commit to correcting it? Wait, stop. Can you, can you just answer that if you, if you can for yourselves confirm?
If there's anything that needs to be corrected, it will be corrected.
Thank you. Um, so it was reported in the press that if this is voted down, that the, um, school board will most likely do another referendum with a scaled down version. Is that kind of the mindset and the frame of mind that the school board has? If this fails, it'll come back with a smaller version or is that just the press speculating? Cause that's a real good idea.
Uh, if, if this does not pass, we have, um, one year, right? To put it up again, whether it's the same size, smaller.
Okay.
We have one year.
Um, the concern about buildings and the piling, drop, piling, drive, pile drivings? Just because of the location where it is, you might have some dirt basements over there. You might have some wood frame houses. Are they going to be pile drivers or screw in?
I defer to you.
Yes, I think they need you on a mic. This is an important one, so.
Uh, before any pile driving, there's a survey done of everyone's basement and the surrounding communities, you know, provided they, uh, residents allow them in. And they, uh, take photographs of all existing conditions and they're very careful about uh, any cracks that would appear after pile driving. So that's done as part of the process of construction.
So is pile driving? Is it screw?
Well, it hasn't been determined yet. So, uh, I think they'll, uh, we have Penoni Associates and they will come up with the proper way to do it, the, the least intrusive. Thank you.
Having personally lobbied for screw ins, anybody who's ever listens to this, if you're, if you feel your building is at risk, make a lot of noise, make them do screw pilings because it could protect it. Um, let's see. Um, and I know that a lot of people are asking this. I, I guess I want a definitive, definitive answer. Obviously for years on end, you've been discussing facilities in the future and the crush and the this and then that was coming up. What I would like the answer to is when was the beginning of this plan? This specific plan that is now being voted on? Not how your ongoing discussions, but when was the beginning of the inception of this is our high school plan? And then just really honestly definitively, it's the thing I can't get past more than anything else. Why didn't you invite the community? Why didn't you invite the community? I've just never seen anything like it. I think you're going to get a lot more no votes because you didn't. Um, so that's just my thoughts. And, uh, yes, people are angry about that. Thank you.
Cheryl Brennan? Oh, Sheila Brennan, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll be pretty quick. Um, I guess my, my question, I know you've said you're listening, you're taking notes. Um, what comes of that? Will we, will we have any impact at all or is this just political theater? Cause that's what it feels like to me. I've been to enough council meetings and, and other board meetings to, to know that you listen or you appear to listen to the public and they don't have the least little bit of impact and, and are have no way to, uh, change the outcome or the upshot of this whole thing. So, um, what is going to be the process for any changes that the public might make or might cause you to consider over the course of the next several weeks of meetings? When are we likely to see revised plans or will we ever? Or are, did I just lose an evening in my life when I could have been doing something much more interesting or fun? So what, that is a question that I would like an answer to now if you have it. Or if you don't know now, could you please include that in the FAQs? So we know what real role the public is going to play in this and if we have any chance at all of affecting change to this plan.
We will certainly, we will certainly address your question in the FAQ.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mary Andreka?
That's very good. I'm glad you said that. A lot of people get it wrong. Mary Andreka, 159 9th Street. Um, the architects stated that they wanted a better environment. Um, I live on 9th Street and that actually is my favorite park, the county park. It's Columbus Park and I, I like the, the vibe there. And I went this last weekend to assess what would be lost. That open field is open space and light and air for so many people. The development that occurred on Jefferson occurred because you've got views, you've got open space. The, much my shock on the film I saw that the tennis courts were gone, they're open air courts. They've got a fence, the sun's light, the people enjoy it. You walk up there, you don't have to go into a building to go into a court that will have artificial lighting. Two years ago on May 10th, Ricardo Rio put that, um, on the wall in the back of the courts, the mural, that will now be obscured by a four-story structure. I'm a little at a loss at how many stories it is because it is taller than everything else because you, I looked at the diagrams very well. I studied them clearly several times. And he stated five floors. I think the field's on the third, but then there's like these two other floors that are offset by that field. So it's five floors in some place and three in another. But still it's taller than any of the structures around there. The woman Carol who, uh, lives in, uh, 900, 409th, I remember when that went up. That was a two-story or one-story propeller building and I bemoaned that building going up because there was shade on the park. The park was very important to me and when I saw what this would do, most schools in urban areas are built on corners. There's a reason for that, to allow for the noise factor and you don't want to enclose it within a space that is entirely surrounded by buildings, which in this case it is accepting for the park and the building would be flush right up because there's no tennis courts keeping it a little bit away. So the shadows study, which was not done, it will be most perpetually in the dark all day because, uh, you've got, you've got a blockage on the, uh, west side, you've got it on the, uh, south. because you've got a blockage on the west side, you've got it on the south and north. So everybody that lives there, their lives will be impacted tremendously. But not only that, it's just incredibly sad that that's open space where the gazebo is and it will be completely walled off. I've lived in this town long enough to see the destruction of open space. That breaks my heart more than anything else. The cost is a lot, but the space is gone forever. And the fact that, I've been on Ninth Street all these years and I've seen the flooding that occurs down there. I used to go down there just to look at it. There's no way with digging down, you dig six feet down at Adams, you hit water. You dig down, they said 101 Marshall wouldn't flood and it did. They put the retention tanks with all good heart and it doesn't work. Trust me, it doesn't work. You're trying to put a square peg in a round hole and it's not necessary at the cost of the society. The demographics have changed, New York has changed forever. It will never be the same. The office situation won't. Hoboken fed off of the city of New York since the mid-1980s. Those days are gone. You do not need to live in Hoboken to work in New York. Thirty percent of the population wants to stay at home. A lot of these two and three apartment building bedrooms, there are offices for a wife and a husband or elderly people for their children when they visit. Don't misconstrue facts. Thank you. Just remember, you are sabotaging yourself as a board because we are going to vote no. That's the way it's gonna happen because you've given us a black and white picture here. There are countless questions I have, as well as others in this whole audience that you've seen. You should have at your next meeting just a question and answer. And these guys, you better do your homework. Because you know what? I don't care if you've worked for 15 years with this board. The other lady that came up, you're not doing your job. Now, I don't know where you live and where you did those in Massachusetts.
Excuse me, time's up.
Please, you must understand.
Dan Thompson?
We will vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Thompson?
I have to say, I'm very impressed with the turnout tonight and the fact that you have a very coherent point of view being projected to you about the fact that this is something that's going to cost people lots of money and going to ruin the environment and so forth. But I'm most impressed by the fact that so many people in so many different ways have pointed out the real problems with this project. What I'm hoping is, and I think this is possible, that you all will, having listened to the consistent points of view, I mean, many different aspects of it, but consistent about the fact that this is not the right way to go and that you can use your power in this Board of Education to back off of this and say, we've got to really think this through more, have more interaction with the public like you did tonight. And basically, I don't think it's a good idea to have a referendum on this until you actually figure out the right thing to do. I think that that's the one thing that's consistent about tonight and the people who came here is that they have given you feedback that indicates that you're headed in the wrong direction and you need to reconsider. So I hope you will. Thank you.
Bryant Marone?
Just gonna follow up, Brian Murray. I live in the second ward and councilperson Fisher is my councilperson and she drives me crazy. I get email after email after email about Washington Street redesign and the, whatever it's called, the flood redesign. And there's a, you know, community presentation on this and there's community feedback forums and there's surveys. And it's to the point where, please stop emailing me, Tiffany, please, okay? But what she does do is she takes community input and she answers lots and lots and lots and lots of questions in her emails every week. So when I walked in today to the meeting, I got this piece of paper with, I don't know if you guys got one too, it has 29 questions on it, or 26 questions. It looked like some guy just banged this out in his basement real fast. And this is like 26 out of like the 126 questions that were asked here. And all of this could have been avoided had you just put out an FAQ upfront that said, hey, here's the question that somebody's gonna ask and here's the answer. Versus, hey, we're gonna come up with this FAQ after we hear all of your questions? You've known about this project for a long time. You could have anticipated the questions for a long time. You probably got a bunch of the questions for a long time. And yet you chose to like have this weird forum where all of these people are coming here to ask a bunch of questions because you didn't give them any answers. So, you know, it's very disappointing. I know Dr. Johnson is a serious woman and a great professional and this does not look like her work at all. But it does look like some of the rest of you that I've dealt with in the past. I don't see any studies, I don't see any study from McKinsey on, you know, populations of the school and how that's gonna happen. And your guesses on these one and two and three-bedroom apartments? Well, I can tell you where people live in that 40% of all of the apartments built are one-bedrooms and about 50% are two-bedrooms and about 10% are three-bedrooms. And if these are rentals, which most of the new construction is, that skews a lot more towards the one-bedrooms because Larry Bijou likes to make money on the one-bedroom apartments and not the two and the threes. So, you know, a lot of this data is just not there for the people here and that's just too important. And perhaps you did all the political calculus that says you're gonna get your 5,000 votes from the parents of the school board, the people in the school system and everybody else doesn't deserve any answers. But that would be unfortunate because all you had to do was put out some answers and you probably would have gotten another 5,000 votes. Thank you.
Bryant Budnik? Bryant Budnik?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bryant Budnik. I live across the street at 920 Jefferson, so in the interest of disclosure, I don't know that there are that many folks that are gonna be that more impacted than... Sorry. My name is Bryant Budnik. I live at 920 Jefferson Street. I'll look directly, like, every day for the last year and a half, I stared right at the football field. So in the interest of disclosure, I'm trying not to make nimpie comments tonight. I've tried, can ask my neighbors in my building to keep an open mind about this, tone down some of the emails that I've seen. I guess I wanna make a very discreet point and I'll see you guys week to week. And again, I know there's been, you know, comments about being very negative tonight, but it strikes me that the Board of Education is very bad at running the facilities it has now. And I'd like to pick up just on a comment that was made about the pool. It strikes me as unusual that the retort to the pool existing is that the city runs it in the summer. It's an indoor pool and it's in your facility. And you're proposing, as everyone else has said, a massive athletic complex. Why isn't it open now? Why aren't you taking responsibility to run it now?
We currently have a swim team, we have a swim program at our middle school, our students use it. Our students use it during the school year, so it is available to the city in the summertime.
Do you think that that's reasonable, that it couldn't be open on the weekends or after hours? I think that's the concern that the community has, is that that's a massively expensive facility as a pool. And to dedicate it for nine months of the year, even your own response right now, why would that be any different when the new facility is built?
Go ahead.
Well, just can I make one? Go ahead.
Let me do a little background on that.
Sure.
From a facilities perspective.
Can you talk? I don't know if they can hear you with the mic or... Okay.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
From a facilities perspective, the use of the facilities is actually very high. Probably a lot higher than most people think, okay? So sometimes people have a tendency, I see it even now, looking over the last two years. So yes, you're 100% correct. The facility's use has been limited as a result of COVID, but prior to that, we have a system that set up, our gymnasiums are used from after-school until late, late at night with the recreation's basketball program, after-school programs, et cetera. In terms of the pool...
Can I stop you right there and give you an example? The facility downstairs was empty tonight and there are kids in December playing basketball in the parks. As someone who plays basketball in the city, there is so little transparency to get a private run. I live across from the field. It is locked all the time.
Well, let me answer the question for you.
Sure.
Okay. So the facility here being open, it's not, we don't have an open gym facility. It's not a, we don't create a policy that allows for open gyms. However, we do have a policy that allows for...
Why would that change though?
Excuse me?
Why would that change with the new facility? That's the problem. You don't have a policy now. You're not good at running these facilities. Why would we think they'll be better in the future?
Well, I, quite frankly, I disagree in terms of running the facilities for community use. The community uses the facilities all the time. Right now, if you're asking about the pool, one of the reasons why the summer is open for the recreation to run those programs is because during the school year, the kids use the pool for gym classes. They use the pool for swimming practices as well as swim team. We not only have a high school team, but there's a middle school program as well. And it is used in the after-school program as well as in the summer by the LEAP students. So what we do is we open, let me finish. What we do is we open the pool and we say to the recreation department or the city, if you have a program that you would like to run in the schools, by all means. They receive the facility, there's no cost to use the facility. As a school district, we run as many community programs as we possibly can. And we also let the recreation department run programs as much as they can. So in the summer, the recreation department does have open access. They have the ability to run those swim programs, open swim for the kids. They can do it. They can do that whenever they want and they do have access and they do it well. They do it extremely well. Now, in terms of adding to the use of the facilities, this gives us the opportunity to have another complex to be able to put to the community. Does that mean that the school district is going to be running open swim? Not necessarily. What it means is, hold on. What it means is, the school district can offer to the city free use of the pool. Whenever they'd like to run adult open swim, child open swim, infant and pre-K learn-to-swim programs. They can do those things. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to run recreation programs. But it's available to the recreation programs to actually run, the department to run.
This is my fear, right? You're gonna build the facility, stay, it's turning it over to the city to run and they're gonna do what they do now. And I'm happy to follow up with you via email and separately. You were so wonderful in the pandemic, you're the most, you have to be the most responsive superintendent working in America during COVID. I am telling you, there are other things that New York City, New York City has open basketball runs in almost every public school through private facilities. Leo Pellegrini has told me he will not do that in Hoboken. You're going to build a facility and turn it over to the city and it will not be open to the community.
So you bring up one really good point. Someone asked, and I don't know if it was Cheryl or someone just asked before, what kind of input also can we have? So you're bringing up some really good points. If that's something that the city is really looking for and the recreation department is not running or would not run those things, we have no problem. We do it in the summertime. We do open fitness programs on the field. We ran them all summer this year, we ran them all summer last year for every child in Hoboken, not just the public school kids.
I would say this, I think you guys are being misleading by saying you're gonna have an open community facility. What you're really saying is you're going to build a facility, turn it over to the city and not have an open drop-in. I should be able to, if you're gonna build a true community facility, it's open. It's not sign up or get into a program or there's certain hours where it's restricted.
Yeah, so, so look, that's actually a very good point and that's something that we would talk about from a facilities perspective and from a community standpoint. And that may be something that actually happens. It's a, you're bringing up what I would consider to be a very reasonable point.
I thank everyone for their time tonight. Have a great evening, for sure.
William Pang?
Good evening. Now it's kinda late. My name is William Pang, Hoboken resident. To be honest, I recently moved here. I just have a few questions. More from a financial perspective because everybody's paying for it, right? It actually, I tried to search for it. I don't really find a lot of details what make up that $240 million, right? As you know, like, building something, it's not cheap. And how do you account for, you know, increased logistics prices, right? Increased materials, right? Is there any contingency bill in that $240, right? And if you go above budget the three years from now, do you need to do another vote to get more funding, right? Do we just kinda get stuck with a project and you keep me to fund it? Like, how's that gonna work?
Dan, do you wanna address, or the architects wanna address, what's built into the $241 million cost from a contingency inflation?
No. You know, inflation is always creeping and costs have been going up. So there is contingency built into the program, escalation as well. And you're asked, is this gonna go over budget? The answer is no. Unless we have some kind of, and some, I've been doing this for 35 years. And we bring our projects in on budget, so I just... Okay. It won't, why I say that is that we have detailed cost estimates based on what we have now, which is a schematic design. As that design progresses, we do estimates at the design development phase, a full estimate again. We do a follow-up at 30% construction documents, 60% construction documents and 90% construction documents, right before we go and put it out to public bid. We know what the project's gonna cost before it goes out because the most recent estimate will be within a couple of months of the date of the bid opening. So we can control the costs. Now, if we see costs going escalating, that's why we have contingencies. But we can always value engineer certain parts of the building as well. So there are many, there are many things that we can do to control costs, which we have over the years. That's what you have to do. People expect it. I would say that it would be my hope that there'll actually be some monies turned back to the city because we come in under budget. Thank you.
I'll make a comment here, right? Like, so it's very easy to control costs based on experience, but we also have a higher inflation than ever, than nobody experienced before. So it's really bold, or bold statements say, like, we're very good in estimating costs, right? Because what I know is like, what's problematic is a bad budget, which is oftentimes happens with these type of long-term projects. But I just wanted, you have an answer to me though, like, what's the, how much contingency is built into that? Yeah, but how much, like this? About 30 million over? And is, I have a question maybe on the tax side, right? How do you estimate that $93 per 100,000? Is that including just the $240 million plus the interest? Or it includes the additional operating costs of the new high school, right? Because is that all built into that over the 30-year period?
The operating costs would be offset by the rental revenue that the school would bring in from any outside groups renting the building. And so the $241 million includes contingencies, soft costs, meaning desks, furniture, everything that is, will be used to furnish the building, the Zamboni. And what am I missing?
Technology, security, all the soft costs. This is a cost of construction cost, expecting to be a lot higher. It's like the cost of the building itself, the rest of the soft costs.
Is that based on prior experience or you actually have someone bid on it?
No, this is based on what we know today.
So a bid or a just?
Well, I mean, you're, you're undertaking a precaution, working with estimators. We're trying to get a little inflationary, or is anybody's really quite sure what's gonna happen? So we feel we've built it enough, so that we can turn it back on the estimate. That's the goal, that's what we're doing. This is a pass, we're very successful in getting a bunch of your order.
Okay, and I guess the bond price at 2.2%, is that locked in or is it just an estimate at that point?
Bond prices are going to, the bond comes with different, actually less than that.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Solomini from Melens, Goldman and Spitzer. We're the bond counsel. I just wanna address your first issue about the cost of the project. The cost of the project cannot go over what is authorized by the voters. So they're not legally allowed to spend $1 more. legally allowed to spend $1 more without getting additional voter approval. And the way the process works, just to give you a little background, is, once you go to a referendum, that's when they prepare, your architect prepares the final construction documents, and then it goes out to bid and will have the actual cost. Same thing with the financing on the bonds, is this is just an estimate, and when I get done, I'll bring up the financial advisor, and she can talk to you about how that was calculated. But that's an estimate right now, based on current market conditions of what a 30-year bond sale would sell for under market conditions. So once we have an approved referendum, then we'd go and we'd publicly sell the bonds, and that would establish the exact interest rate and the exact debt service schedule. But to give you some comfort, the board is not allowed to spend $1 more without getting additional voter approval. So that's why the state law requires, and that's why good practice requires, the architect to build in that contingency, because they can't go over that. And Heather Litzbauer from NW can talk to you.
...experienced before with overages, where they have to, they do change controls that don't even meet legal standards and push them through council. Once they've gone a certain percentage of the way, you know, you're...
So Heather Litzbauer from NW ran the financial calculation, so she would be able to provide info on it.
Yeah, I was going to say, like, it would be incredibly helpful. You can actually give people some time, digest the information, before you can, you can actually make a decision, yes or no, right? From personal experience, I kind of make an effort to come to this meeting, because I'm heading away for the holidays, and I literally found out maybe earlier this week. So, and it's like, and I spent like, I'm not kidding you, I spent 30 minutes trying to look up, like, when did this got announced, and it took me a little bit, and all I found is a couple particles, and it's kind of late, and I still have a month of time, to be honest, but I do think that detail would be better if you disclose it when you announce a project too. So people get, digest it, and you have a more meaningful Q and A session in the upcoming weeks, right? You have one next week and two more in January. Just a suggestion, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just as far as, to talk about the bond financing, we're at historical lows right now for borrowing any money on a municipal level. A 30-year bond right now is currently at 2%, so we're, we have about 20 basis points to work with right now. And that fluctuates, obviously, on a daily basis, but there's huge investor demand right now for municipal paper.
What would the rating be on the bond?
The Board of Education doesn't have a current rating. The city's rating is double A. One of the main things that they look at, besides the finances, is also wealth levels of the community, demographics, different things, so we think that the rating would be similar to the city's rating.
What's the operating cost of the asset?
I don't work on the operating costs, I'm just on the bond side.
What are the base...
Okay, next, we're going to take the next speaker. Okay, Cheryl and Bill Hurd. They left? Leslie Norwood. No? Sheila Sully? S C U L L Y, Sheila Sully? That's the last name on the list. I'm sorry?
Laura Brizzi, yeah, from another sheet.
Hello, my name is Laura Brizzi, and I live at 1200 Grants, and I also own a condo at 409th Street. So I'd like to start off by saying thank you for investing in our children and our future, as being a teacher and on the board. I have to say, I've been in Hoboken for 19 years, and I'm disappointed at this whole process that you're rushing it through during this holiday season, where I should be home, literally wrapping presents and finishing my Christmas cards. I've spent with everybody else over four hours here. It turns my stomach as to what you are pushing down, and my question is, I will first submit this gentleman that took the time to put all these questions, I would like to submit the 26 questions to be answered. So I don't know, I'll give it to you. In addition to that, what I would like to know, what other bids were out there, other than using an architect firm that you've been using for 15 years? I feel that the, it was kind of antiquated, no disrespect, it's antiquated, and it's a lot of money. We are one mile, you know, we're one mile, understanding the future, but this is a sports facility, we don't need such a large space. People flip and people renovate all the time, so I would like you to look at just renovating the building and keeping our open space. I don't want to look out, I don't want my tenants to look out the window at 409th Street and see an eyesore. So that's what, honestly, if you ever hear somebody saying that it's a monster eyesore, that's what I say about this project. So I will, if you could repeat at the end of the session, the email to email further questions, but I just have to say I'm disappointed in the whole process, and I don't like it, I don't want it, and you've disturbed our holiday season. And my voice is getting a little cracky, because this is the happiest time of the year, the most wonderful time of the year, and you have made this awful for us. You have aggravated us. You have just, it's just, we shouldn't be here right now, and you have four more sessions right at the holiday season? Not fair to us, and not fair to the people that celebrate the birth of Jesus and everything else that comes along with this wonderful time of the year. So you have upset us, and I'm disappointed with all of you. And you could, if you sleep at night, that's great, but you are disturbing us and disturbing what we invested in this Hoboken community. So I would say, do not pass this, find a cheaper solution. Find a solution that is not going to hurt 409th Street and the surrounding buildings and hurt our park, because you already hurt us. So thank you for your time, and Merry Christmas, everyone.
That was the last, that's the last one.
I think, you know, if anybody has any more questions, we are going to put out an FAQ if you have questions. Malani, can you read the email address? And you feel free to email, and we will respond to them.
So just for everybody, the email address, again, and it's one word, proposed new HHS. So proposed new HHS, all one, no breaks, at hoboken.k12 nj.us. Doesn't have to be capital, doesn't have to be, just all one word, proposed new HHS. At hoboken.k12 nj.us. So it's the same web address as all of our emails, it's just the first part is hoboken, proposed new HHS.
Well, thank you. We are going to continue on with the rest of our meeting, so actually, we will be going into executive session as our next action, to discuss student matters, and we will be taking action when we return. Do I have a motion?
Ms. McGurk? Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon? Huh? Mr. Karian? Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, it is now 11:57, and we are coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to return to the meeting?
Motion. Second. Roll call. Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Karian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, we will be voting on a resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. Board of Executive Sessions, seeking to discuss students' fire and matter. Assistant, the law will be considering the action. Thank you. We await the resolution discussed by Board of Executive Session. Resolve, that's student 804795. Having given notice and honor, we think to be heard in connection with the proposed law, we're suspended. We hereby suspend it for the end of the third quarter, for engaging in physical violence that injures students instead of violating of district and school policies. We have a motion in executive house.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Karian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor say, I'm sorry?
The second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.